To order the city council meeting for Chattanooga, Tennessee for Tuesday, September 16th, 2025. I'd like to invite councilwoman Burris to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We are going to start our meeting with a public hearing related to the budget ordinance changes. And so we're going to place a musical chair, Councilwoman Dotley.
Hey, Phil. All right, good afternoon, everybody. Hello, are y'all out there, people here? Y'all better get up, we're here, you better get up too. All right, so this will be our public hearing for a budget ordinance regarding community development. This is dismantling DEI Departments Act. So within our call, this public hearing to order, we'll give two minutes to speak with a maximum of an hour. We can assess the hour at the end of that. And Mr. O'Toole, could you read our rules, please?
I'd be glad to, yes ma'am. Soon as I get it on the screen, here's no problem. I didn't do that quickly enough.
Yes, and if you plan to speak, please go ahead and line up behind this podium.
All right, hold on.
Okay.
How quickly. All right. And today's meeting for a public hearing, the chair has recognized that this will have a different set of time than normal. But you have two minutes to speak for each one. And so each speaker wishing to address the council can only be recognized upfront at the microphone provided for that purpose. Can't have more than two minutes to speak and address the council only upon matters that are within the legislative in quiesce judicial authority and not on matters which are not under their authority or regulated by other governmental bodies or agencies. If you can, keep to the items that are before the council on this particular item here today, since this is the public hearing on an ordinance change. Do not engage in any vulgar obscene language nor use the Florida personally attack or personally denigrate others and address your comments to the council as a whole and not towards individual council members. And do not engage in disorderly conduct or disrupting a public meeting, which is prohibited by Tennessee law. Someone commits that offense, if the person obstructs substantially obstructs or interferes with the meeting by physical action or verbal utterance with the intent to prevent or disrupt a lawful meeting or gathering. Having stated those rules, please go ahead if anyone wishes to speak.
All right, going once, twice, three times. Thank you so much for this public hearing today, we appreciate you so much. So with that, city, turn around, is anyone willing to speak?
Ma'am.
I'm going to close this out.
You can close that.
All right, so I closed this public hearing of budget ordinance re-community development dismantling DEI Departments Act. That is it, turn it over back to Madam Chair.
All right, council, can I please get a motion on the minutes?
Oh, move.
Thank you, motion to approve the minutes, we'll stand without objection. All right, council, let's take a look at our agenda for today, please. We have items under final reading, several planning items. My intent is to take those as a group. If you have a reason why we shouldn't do that, please hit your light. All right, moving on to ordinances under first reading, we do have the two changes to the budget. We will take those individually and we will do a roll call vote on those. Resolutions? Councilwoman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know who's going to field this question. I had a question about when we did away with the Department of DEI, like the administrator's position, where did that money, what did we do with that money since we were eliminating an administrator? Where's the chief here?
I will come forward, are you talking about equity?
Yeah, Department of Equity.
So the chief equity officer, so you're referring to the chief equity officer?
Well, so we had a department administrator, Tony Salmons was in that position.
Yes, he was the chief equity officer.
He was retired. So during our budget hearings, we had actually brought up or even talked about merging those or consolidating those at that time because we felt like we could create some efficiencies and save that money. This looks like it's a wash, it's budget neutral. Where did, since we no longer have that position, where did that money go?
I'll have to follow up and get that information for you. We are not filling that position, so that should be a vacancy, that is vacancy savings. But I'll have to follow up with Kevin and find out because I haven't seen that paperwork.
But it's not showing up in our eliminating that department and moving them, moving the money to the community development or wherever the...
Yeah, I will, I will follow up with you and get that information as to where the position went. Because like I said, it's not going, obviously it's not going to community development. They're merging with the department and that department is remaining vacant, or that, I'm sorry, that position is remaining vacant.
So constituent services shows an increase, was that from neighborhood services or what was, what was the increase for...
So constituent services added neighborhood services underneath of it, where they did not have that before. They had 311 only and neighborhood services was moved underneath of OCS.
So is that the only difference in the addition to community constituent services increase?
That should be the only difference to the constituent services. I will verify that and send you that information after this meeting.
Okay. The second thing, something that, there must have been a difference from our budget worksheets to the reallocation of dollars, but there was about, it seemed like around $145,000 difference between what's showing up as being deleted currently is about 1.922, but what's in our budget worksheet for the Department of Equity and Community is about $2,067,000. So was there, was there some kind of shift between our budget worksheets and what we actually wound up with on our budget amendment?
That I do not know, so I will get the information as soon as we get out of this meeting.
And here comes Weston.
Oh, and here comes, here comes Weston.
So, so the budget book, there are sometimes there's some changes, some final allocations that are done after the books are printed. And it's included, was included in the original ordinance that was passed in June. But those books, there's changes that are made and we don't reprint the books every time there's changes made. So there may be some slight changes between the book, I think that you have the pages from, and the budget that was passed in June. But we can, we can run down the differences.
If you don't mind, I'd just like to know where the difference is between what was printed and then what was actually, I guess, passed in June then.
We'll get it for you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Burris.
My, I thought we were getting ready to move on to the resolution, so I'll yield in case anybody else has any comments.
Councilwoman Elliott, is this about the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Councilwoman Elliott.
Two questions. One, Councilman Henderson, are you referring to the cost centers with your questions? Are you referring to the top line items?
Well, I was referring to our budget work, well, to some of the line items. Basically, the bottom line, and particularly, which, like which question, you talk about the reason, the numbers, you don't seem to have...
Yeah, because I think for even our budget book, and I think this is my perspective that I had to learn that, you know, even when we, this budget book is interesting in, in many regards. We really only vote on the top line item for the, for the budget. And as far as I can know, all the money in each department, after we vote on it, it's free game for them to move it around as well because we're not moving, we're not really voting on it.
I was referring to the top line budget.
Oh, the top line, okay, okay, then that's mine, then that's mine. Because I know for me, I was confused coming in because I thought the line items that were in the budget and the cost centers, that's something that was concrete, but it's not. And I know it can be some confusion probably to some of our other colleagues too, who may not know that, to clarify that piece.
Because the ordinance actually just goes top line.
Yeah, yeah.
Is what we actually vote on.
Yeah, okay, now I'm on the same page as what you're talking about. And one last question, I don't know if this is a question for you, Mandy, or somebody else. As we're digging into this amendment, we have assurances that no one's going to be losing their job, correct, with this shift?
You're asking specific to the amendment that we just passed?
Yes, like as we're rearranging, moving past the department amendment.
That we're voting on. On, on the consolidation of it.
Yeah, the consolidation as we're moving...
No one is losing their job.
Nobody's losing their job.
We're just not filling the chief equity office.
Okay, perfect, I just make sure, make sure everybody has peace of mind that everybody's jobs are secure.
Everybody's job is secure.
That's all, Madam Chair.
Vice Chairwoman Knoll.
Former Councilman Latford, I see you stood up, is there something you think we need to hear?
No, ma'am, just lending support.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
I want to make sure your questions are recorded and we get your answers accordingly.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, council, do we have any other questions about the items under mayor's office ordinances under first reading? If so, please hit your light. All right, seeing none, Councilwoman Burris, would you like to make your light and we'll move into resolutions? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say that I'm going to make a motion to approve the resolution regarding the modification of permit fees relative to the August 12th flood damage and going with alternate version four, which I think you all have a copy of. We, we talked about it last week where we made a few tweaks to remove some language that was no longer applicable and I think it's ready to go.
That's the red one?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, Councilwoman, anything else about that?
No, that's all, thank you.
Okay. Council, do we have any other questions about other resolutions on today's agenda? All right, seeing no lights, let's take a look at the purchases, please, for this evening. Any questions about purchases, please go ahead and hit your light. All right, seeing none, let's go back to our two-week agenda, please. Our two-week agenda, we have two items under first reading with planning. These, actually, it's only one, excuse me, there's just an applicant version. That is the item in District Four that we delayed a couple of weeks. We have some resolutions, if you have any questions, please hit your light. The wastewater item, item G, Mark, would you like to speak to that?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We intend to withdraw that resolution for next week's agenda. A bid came in over our budget and at this point in time, we're going to try to look and see what we can do outside of awarding that entire contract. We're going to see what we can do to get that scope of work to where we can manage that project.
Okay, thank you, council, do we have any questions about that?
It'll require a motion to...
Right, and that will be next week.
Yep.
All right, looks like we're good for next week, let's take a look at future considerations, please, council. Councilwoman Dotley.
Yes, thank you so much, Madam Chair. I did have a question about that first item on economic development. Very excited to see some things happening out at Northgate Mall and was just curious if we were going to get a presentation regarding this TIF.
Councilwoman Elliott, would you like to answer that?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got my colors wrong, there you go.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam, Councilwoman Dotley, we will be giving a presentation on this TIF as well as in a TIF amendment on September 30th at an Economic Development Committee here.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, council, we had some other lights live, if you want to go ahead and hit them, I can come back to you about other issues. Looks like everybody got their questions answered. It was about the TIF, okay. All right, looks like we are good on that then, thank you, council. All right, so we are set for tonight's agenda. We will have an attorney-client meeting after our session. Next up, we have an Affordable Housing Committee meeting, which will be chaired by Chairwoman Dotley.
Madam Chair.
Yes?
Before we move on, I wanted to, if I will...
Okay, go ahead.
I would like for next week to put on the agenda, and there may need to be a conversation about what this needs to be, but there's been some changes to the senior tax freeze laws that has applied some cost of living adjustments to the maximum income limits. They're tied to the Social Security numbers, and Phil can probably help us out with more information. But I would like to put a resolution on the calendar for us to tie our income limits for our tax freeze to that allowed by the state, allowing for cost of living adjustments. Because currently, we can now increase our limits to, I believe, $61,000 and some change for those who qualify and so on and so forth as the years progress. This will be an opportunity to continue to allow our seniors to get some breathing room. And as cost of living adjusts, as things become more expensive, the state has acknowledged that and allowing us to make sure we're giving more seniors opportunity to take advantage of the program.
Would you like to add anything?
Yeah, there are local option limits that were set by the legislation that was passed here in 2024. And the first available year allowed that local option income limit to be $60,000 that was set in the statute. But the limits also are calculated using some sort of standard methodology to include the annual cost of living adjustment, the COLA amount for Social Security recipients. And each year, that amount can go up. And for 2024 year, for the 23 Social Security income year, it was 8.70 on their amount that got them to the $60,000. And it's increasing in 2025 for Social Security income in 2024 of 3.2%. It will increase for 2025 to 2.5%. So our resolution just simply needs to include that annual increase in it going up, and we can do that.
Yes. And Phil, can we add that information to, or however it needs to be packaged to next week's agenda, if that's okay with you, Madam Chair?
It's fine with me, I'd like to have that by Thursday for the clerk, please.
I will.
The language, the appropriate language. Councilwoman Burris, do you have a question about this?
I think you answered my question, thank you.
Okay, do you have additional, I have a question.
Oh, I have one other thing outside of this, please.
Okay, well, related to the senior tax freeze. So as I understand it, the state had made the decision to go to the 60, and it sounds like it was related to the cost of living. And, and while we voted on it, it was already legal within the state. So are you saying that each time this, we have to adopt a local option each time?
No.
Or when we do this COLA, then we've, we're just tracking with what the state allows?
Tracking with what the state allows, and we would just say each time, since they did not have an amendment in 2017, whenever we initially adopted our ordinance, they are saying that we need to have a resolution approving that. That's what the comptroller is telling us. And as long as we have it for the comptroller saying that it has adjusted by any amount approved by state law for the cost of living adjustment, then I think we'll be fine.
Might we want to add any language, or is there already language within that standard resolution that would include some type of yearly reporting to the council about what that new rate will be?
We can, right now we...
That could be useful so that we're always made aware each year what that number...
We can do that. The comptroller's office right now has only got things through 2026, I think, on their webpage here. And we can do that to have some type of reporting requirement each year.
But each year, our CFO could give us the update as we look at the budget overall?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, I'll include that.
I think that would be useful. Okay, Councilwoman Elliott, yes?
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. And finally, I want to give an update to council. I talked to the administration after we brought this up last week in regards to putting our cost centers, remaining balances and funds to items on the agenda so we can actually see where the money's coming from. The administration said they'll be able to start making these adjustments in the next few weeks. And so we'll start seeing our agendas include that information. So just provide a little bit more transparency and some knowledge to council members and the public as a whole as to where money's coming from, how's it being spent, and we can just track it along the way.
Thank you for that update. Do we have any other conversation before we move into affordable housing? Welcome back, Father Harvey. All right, I will turn the speaker to Chairwoman Dotley.
Hello. All right, back again. All right, so I bring our Affordable Housing Community into order, can I get approval on the minutes?
Some move.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, council, minutes stand without objection. Today, we'll be hearing about a housing pilot for 702 Manufacturers Road, which is in District One. And Hanukkah could come up, or Nicole, whoever's doing the presentation, would appreciate that so much. This is part of our new, all of our new housing tools that we're, that we have. So with that, I will turn it over.
Thank you so much, good afternoon, council. My slides to pop up here. So we're here today to talk about a very exciting moment. We've had our first application under the Affordable Housing Pilot Program. Now, as some of you may remember, we redesigned this program last year. It was adopted by the city council on March 26th last year. There were four main policy goals that drove the redesign of this program. Those goals were to encourage all new development, to include some affordable units in their mix, to target incentives to work in all neighborhoods so we could see all neighborhoods open up housing opportunities for Chattanoogaans at all income levels, to provide developers with flexibility on affordability levels, and importantly, to link the tax abatements directly to the value of the affordable housing units being delivered. And I have to say, this application is exactly who we were thinking of, not specifically, but the type of project we were thinking of as we were redesigning this program. It's a Class A development in a neighborhood that does not yet have any affordable units on the North Shore, right on the river. And it is such a beautiful project, and we're really excited to see that they will be including 42 affordable units as a part of that development. So to get into the numbers, it'll be 42 affordable units, that's 15% of the total units in the project. That's 32 units at 60% AMI. So to break that down, that's 13 studios at about $1,000 a month. You'd be hard pressed to find riverfront, probably $4,000 a month in the North Shore right now. That's affordable to a household making $40,000. We've got 15 one bedrooms at $1075, four two bedrooms at $1290, and then 10 units at 80% AMI. So that's going to be seven one bedrooms at $1433 and three two bedrooms at $1720. Now, in exchange for that public benefit, the project is qualified under our pilot formula for a tax abatement of $416,000 in the first year, and that comes out to a 69% tax abatement. And as you know, what we put into the pilot lease with the developer is that percentage abatement. So over time, as the assessment changes, that percentage abatement will keep up. So currently, this property is delivering about $9,000 a year in property taxes, it's a vacant property. Even with the tax abatement, we will see a significant increase in the public revenue generated by this project for a total payment in lieu of taxes of $341,000. It'll be a 15-year pilot and the affordability will be required for that entire 15-year term. So now I'm going to hand it over to Frank. So now I'm going to hand it over to Frank Reese of the Atlantic Companies, who's going to tell you a bit about the project.
Good afternoon, council members. Thank you so much for your time. I first want to commend Hanukkah and Nicole for the outstanding job they've done, shepherding us through this process. It's really commendable what they've done and what you've done in approving this pilot for your city. As Hanukkah mentioned, my name is Frank Reese. I'm with the Atlantic Companies. We're a full-service real estate company based out of Atlanta in South Carolina. We have experience, development experience throughout Georgia, and Tennessee, and Alabama, and South Carolina. This is our, you know, first, I've previously done a project around Hamilton Place Mall, but this is my first project in in-town Chattanooga. So we're here today to talk to you about our proposed project on the North Shore of Manufacturers' Road. The star shows you the kind of the general area where this is in proximity to the rest of downtown. And this shows you what the property currently looks like. So the property that we're here today to propose to you is 702 Manufacturers', which is the property that's outlined in yellow. That was a formerly industrial site that's now vacant. Just to let you know, we also have the site next door under contract, which is 706 and 710 Manufacturers' Road. So, but the project today that we're currently talking about is 702 Manufacturers'. Our proposed project on 702 is comprised of two hundred and seventy-eight multifamily units, represented by these five buildings on the screen. Additionally, we'll have the buildings at the top are four-story multifamily buildings, and then the bottom of the screen is a five-story building. Additionally, if you'll see on the upper right-hand corner, you'll see a road called Paper Mill. That's currently, that is a city road, and part of our project will be redeveloping that road and building it as part of our project. So where we are in the process of our project, we're already currently going through for land disturbance permit with the city, and we're also in for building permit. The site is currently fully entitled, had been rezoned a couple of years ago for the use that we're proposing to you today. Just to let you know, and Hanukkah already touched on this a little bit, the breakdown of our units. It's two hundred and seventy-eight units, of which fifteen percent or forty-two units are affordables, and it's represented by studio units, one-bedroom, two-bedroom units. And I can show you kind of the average square footage and everything. So benefits to the city. So as part of our deal, we're two hundred and seventy-eight units, of which we'll be providing to the city forty-two affordable units. And within those forty-two affordable units, seventy-five percent of those units will be at sixty percent AMI, and the other twenty-five percent, which is ten units, will be at eighty percent AMI. We're also building the Paper Mill Road, which is a new road. And as Hanukkah mentioned earlier, the property taxes currently for the project are nine thousand dollars. And after our building, our project is fully complete, it'll be three hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's it.
That's it. Thank you so much, Frank. At this moment, we will take questions, council members. Are there any? Yes, Councilman Henderson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I don't know if you want to speak to, I guess if we went back to the overlay-
Yes, sir.
-of the project. When we, when we rezoned this project, property originally, we have in the conditions that you would allow public access to the river and the river walk to be able to continue through this project. And I think what we had envisioned is maybe something like a Blue Goose Hollow little park here that the public could access the river from, and y'all have agreed to honor those conditions as well. I guess one of the questions that I have, and I called one of our fire chiefs to ask, and I don't know if, and I'm talking to the administration now, if we could come up with a tool that would identify stress points on our services whenever we do a project like this? Because I think, I think we need to balance, you know, possible stress points to our services, to the benefits that we receive out of this. And it was my understanding that, and I was particularly interested in the fire department, and it does, our ISO, I guess our ratings, it's not contingent on density as much as it is distance, if I'm correct in that. So a project like this wouldn't put additional stress on our fire department in the fact that we would need another fire hall or anything like that. But I think it would be good if we could come up with a tool that would identify perhaps, you know, stress points that it puts on our services, which in return then affects our budget. Because as we have seen and just gone through, the need for additional revenue to our budget is critical and will be in the coming years. So anytime that we're giving up some amount of money that we would be capturing, I just want to make sure that that's not affecting us in a negative way in our services. In other words, we're not giving up more than we're receiving by the benefit of these affordable units. But I like the project. I think it'd be a great development there. And excited about the possibilities of, you know, access to the river for the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you so much, Councilman Henderson. Madam Chair Hill.
Thank you very much. Frank, I'm glad that you and the, your company have decided to give this pilot a try and that you were able to finagle some options that will work financially with you. Question for you. What is your experience as a company with building affordable units, rent-control-type units, in the past?
So previously, I was with a former company where we did this in the Atlanta area. And very different than here in that there were very set guidelines and rules for how you did the program, like percentage-wise, number of units, as well as sixty, eighty percent. One thing that I appreciate so much about what you guys are providing is the flexibility of this program to really take different unit types, different AMI, and to be able to work with that, per what you said earlier, to make it work for you as well as for the city.
And has the, does the Atlantic Company have projects like this in its portfolio already? These pilot-type projects for affordable housing?
No, ma'am.
So this is new for the Atlantic Company?
Yes, yes.
So it's not something that, it's something that this tool is allowing you to try this new format?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay.
I'm sorry.
I would like to commend you for determining or creating a plan that allows you to create sixty percent AMI units, not just eighty percent. I mean, eighty percent is, there is very little, if no low-hanging fruit, when it comes to building units that are attainable for people, even at a hundred percent AMI. It's very difficult. So the fact that you all were able to look at your numbers and make that bottom line work to get this number of sixty percent AMI units for this census tract is tremendous. You know, District Two is right over, under the bridge from this. And we have a tremendous need for housing for regular, everyday Chattanoogaans. And honestly, the last thing we need is more luxury riverfront apartments. So to get fifteen percent, forty-two units, in what will already be a beautiful market-rate building is a real win, I think, for our city. So thank you very much. And Hanukkah, let me give you yet another pat on the back. And Nicole and Megan, you all have thought creatively about this, and I feel like this is a Chattanooga-style solution, and I think you have a lot to be proud of. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
That's all, Madam Chair. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair Hill. Okay, I don't see any, oh, Councilman Harvey, welcome back.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate that. Glad to be back. We talked offline just a little bit earlier today. But if you don't mind, go back over the application process on, like, who qualifies? If you've got, you know, you've got a hundred people who all qualify, how do you, is it first-come, first-served, and that kind of thing? But thank you for investing in our city. I love to see sites like this that are underutilized and frankly ISOs become something that is so great and so useful for our city. So if you don't mind, talk a little bit about that, so the public kind of understands how that's going to work.
Understood. And first, thank you for your comments. So this project, the one thing I should have mentioned, the affordable units, the forty-two out of the two seventy-eight, are just like any other apartment in the project. The finishes are the same, you know, they're scattered throughout the entire seven acres. They're not in one specific area. So just, I just wanted to clarify that. To your point, it will be, so when you walk in the door to rent an apartment, it'll be the same, similar process as anyone would. They go in, they take information from you. There is a screening process, and this is true anywhere. And the thing that would be, will be different about this is obviously there will be certain income targets, the sixty percent or the eighty percent, that by looking at your financial information, they'll confirm all of that. And so that process will be, the one part that will be different than the other, if anyone just came in to look for a unit. So there will be, and we'll be using a reputable third-party property management company that has experience in affordable housing. So that's the process, as we discussed earlier today.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is it, Councilman Harvey? Okay, thank you. I have Councilman Clark, but before we get to Councilman Clark, I did have a question come in from a concerned constituent. Does, as you look at these, the addresses here, does 706 and 710 have fuel tanks currently? And are there any fire risks within this area to those, to this new development?
It's currently not operable, ma'am. And we just have it under contract. We are not currently the owners of that property. But it's, people, there's a manager for that, and they monitor it. So.
Okay. All right. Any more questions?
Are they filled with fuel?
I almost turned it over to our city attorney.
Yeah, just, always curious, are they full of fuel?
There may be some sludge-type material. It was formerly, it was a liquid asphalt plant.
Yes.
But it's no longer, it has not been in operation for a few years, and there are no active operations that are going on on the site.
Yes.
So there may be some small remnants, but they're not full of fuel. No, sir.
Yeah, the Fire Marshal's Office will have to look at that in connection with the placement of structures close to that source, if it's, I just always get concerned about that when I see large tanks.
Yes, sir.
And if y'all have your future development into that property, then that will resolve that issue, but right now it was not.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Yes, sir.
All right, is it, Mr. Attorney? All right, Councilman Clark.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dotley. Frank Kirby, thank y'all. Good seeing you all again. Was very fortunate to be on a call with you all last week to learn more about this pilot. And I would be first to admit that I am not the biggest fan of affordable housing projects. And I know that, and we discussed some of the stigmas and the concerns about that. What we, and I want to clarify that projects like this, for those of us who have concerns about some issues that coincide with affordable housing projects in certain neighborhoods in my district, it's not that we're not affordable housing, but we have concerns about what that mixed-use looks like in certain zones. And I'm very, very satisfied with the help of our deputy chief of staff, who, Hanukkah, thank you for sending some of that material. There's an amazing calculator that is available to the public. And just kind of understanding, like, how this, how you're able to provide, I think, was forty-two units, to be exact, in an area that typically does not promote affordable housing and for mixed-income use. So I applaud you all for being a business and taking that risk in this pilot program in Chattanooga, and then also for helping a person like me, who may come to the table with some concerns and maybe some biases, to correct that. And I, Darren and I were discussing this, that, you know, we have to look at this in a different framework as what I would like to call opportunity housing. I think sometimes the word affordable, depending on the stigma, you know, it scares people like me in certain areas where we're like, oh, you know, what else does this come with? And I think your project provides a lot of opportunity for people, that's not synonymous with that income area, to have access to groceries, to have access and opportunity access to a school system that is thriving. So thank, I just want to be on record in thanking you for coming up from Atlanta and for being the pilot and for hopefully being the example. And perhaps you can come and bring this opportunity housing initiative to my district. I think Kirby and I discussed some potential parcels, and we would love to work with Atlantic Companies in doing that in my district. So thank you again for helping us understand how this works, and Hanukkah, you're the best. When we ask, when Hanukkah, you ask Hanukkah for quick, for stuff, she sends it, it's accurate. I don't have to do follow-ups, and it's satisfying. So thank you, Hanukkah, for your work. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, I don't have anyone else. Counsel, any other questions? All right, well, Frank, you got off kind of easy. I think I got off a little easy today. So counsel, I do have a question, really for Councilman Henderson. Are you okay with moving this project to the, I guess we'll do two weeks? Okay, we'll move to the two-week agenda. Okay, so we'll move this field and express school. We're at, two weeks. We'll add this project to the two-week agenda to be voted on. And with that, that adjourns this meeting, Madam Chair.
September thirtieth.
Four fifty-five, okay. So, okay, we have an attorney-client, and we will be back at four fifty-five? Okay, four fifty-five, all right. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Will you please read ordinances on final reading, items A through F? You're gonna be a rock star with a handheld mic? Take it away.
I know, karaoke.
Maybe from the top, too, if I couldn't hear.
Yes, yes. Am I good? Okay. Let's try that again. Okay, item A, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So as to rezone part of a property located at 6401 Mountain View Road, from CC Commercial Corridor Zone to INST Institutional Zone, subject to certain conditions. Item B, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So as to rezone properties located in the 2,600 blocks of Long and Williams Street, and the 100 block of West 27th Street, from RN3 Residential Neighborhood Zone and TRN3 Traditional Residential Neighborhood Zone, to the Chestnut Street Form-Based Code context, the CCX9 Commercial Mixed-Use Zone, subject to certain conditions. Item C, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So as to rezone property located at 2518 Bailey Avenue, from RN2 Residential Neighborhood Zone to CNT Neighborhood Transition Commercial Zone. Item D, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So as to rezone property located at 2306 East 14th Street, from RN2 Residential Neighborhood Zone to TRN2 Traditional Residential Neighborhood Zone. Item E, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38 zoning ordinance. So as to rezone property located at 2312 East 14th Street, from RN2 Residential Neighborhood Zone to TRN2 Traditional Residential Neighborhood Zone. Item F, an ordinance to amend Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 38, the Chattanooga Zoning Ordinance as adopted by Ordinance Number 14137 on July 23, 2024, to amend the Form-Based Code parking lot landscape requirements, add a new use definition for crematoriums, and add parking requirements for crematoriums, amend nonconformities for nonresidential uses, and amend townhouse massing.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Please hit your lights if you have any questions or comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Ordnances on first reading. Item A, please.
An ordinance amending Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 2, by repealing Article 12 and amending Article 16 in lieu thereof, and further amending Chattanooga City Code Part II, Chapter 16, Section 16-64, and Chapter 31, Section 31-361, to comply with Public Chapter PC 494 and Public Chapter PC 458.
Can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do we have any questions or comments? Roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Councilman Henderson? Councilman Davis? Councilman Harvey? Councilman Clark? Councilwoman Burz? Councilwoman Dotley? Councilman Elliott? Vice Chair Knoll? Chairwoman Hill?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item B, please.
An ordinance to amend the operation budget, Ordinance Number 14239, known as Fiscal Year 2025 through 2026 Operations Budget, to amend Section 5 to provide for reallocation of appropriations to the Department of Equity and Community Engagement in compliance with the dismantling DEI Act enacted in May 2025 as Tennessee state law, which has resulted in administrative actions with the dissolution of that department to include the restructuring of government functions and consolidation of certain departments, to reallocate appropriations between certain departments, and to amend Section 7E due to administrative changes during fiscal year 2025 through 2026, to reallocate available appropriations for certain new or changed positions.
Thank you. Can I get a motion? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Hit your light if you've got any questions or comments. Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilman Elliott? Councilwoman Dotley? Councilwoman Burz? Councilman Clark? Councilman Harvey? Councilman Davis? Councilman Henderson? Vice Chair Knoll? Chairwoman Hill?
That's eight yeses. Item passes. Resolutions. Item A, alternate version four, please.
Alternate version. A resolution waiving residential modification permit fees and/or giving preference to green grant funding for peak attenuation control, TSS, and stormwater infiltration requirements for those properties which were directly damaged and are being significantly redeveloped or rebuilt in the city of Chattanooga due to the Tuesday, August 12, 2025 flood damage within the city of Chattanooga, which will begin on the adoption of this resolution and expire within the next nine months, on or before May 12, 2026.
Councilwoman Burz?
Move to approve the alternate version?
Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do you have any questions or comments? I'd like to say thank you again, Councilwoman Burz, for bringing this to the council. I think this is important relief for folks affected by the flooding. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item B.
A resolution confirming Mayor Kelly's restructuring of selected government functions, including the creation and consolidation of certain departments to comply with Public Chapter PC 494 and Public Chapter PC 458, more specifically outlined in Exhibit 1 attached herein.
Thank you. Counsel, can I get a motion? Thank you. We have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Take a look at purchases, please.
Good evening, Counsel. We have five purchases recommended for approval this evening. The first one is for Fleet. Ford of Dalton is requesting a 2% increase for year three due to the increase in manufacturing costs. The new estimated annual spend will be $3,100,000. Public Works approved the increase. Number two is for Fire. Mobile Communications has requested to an extension of Motorola Solutions Agreement 557-576 through March 14 of 2026 to be in compliance with Tennessee statewide contract. No additional funds will be added. Number three is for Fleet. This is a one-time purchase of a Komatsu loader from Power Equipment in the amount of $209,000 for water quality. This purchase will be utilizing Sourcewell contract. Number four is for wastewater. This is a one-time purchase of two Angelflow pumps. This so-source purchase from Guthrie Sales and Services is in the amount of $272,024. Number five is from Technology Services. This is a one-time purchase of an Inspire Flight Drone in the amount of $226,356. The award will go to Haze Instrument as the best bid for the city of Chattanooga.
Thank you. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to approve with a proper second. Do I have any questions or comments? All in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, that brings us to committee reports. Councilman Henderson? Councilman Davis? Councilman Harvey? Councilman Clark? Councilman Elliott?
Yes, Vice Chair. Of the Council, we will have a committee.
A new amendment to an existing term.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Dotley?
Thanks so much, Madam Shee. We, in the Budget Committee, we had a public hearing, Budget Ordinance, Re-Community Development, dismantling of DEI Departments Act. And also, we had an Affordable Housing Committee meeting regarding 702 Manufacturers Row, which is in District 1. So, those are my reports.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Burz?
No report.
Vice Chairwoman Knoll? Thank you. We now reach the point in our meeting where we will recognize persons who are here who wish to address the council. If you are here and would like to address the council, please line up behind the podium and listen while our attorney reads the rules. Do we have anyone here who would like to address the council this evening? If you are here, please go ahead and stand up. Counsel, we are now going to return to the tradition of voting to adjourn, so we never have any confusion about that. So, all in favor of adjourning? Hit your light? Councilman Harvey?
So, may I like to be one of the commenters tonight for public hearing?
Okay.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, all right, okay.
I don't think he has to have that, does he? He can just, as a matter of privilege, you may speak.
Three minutes starting now, okay, all right. Hold me, hold me to it. I simply just, I feel compelled to say something regarding last week's events. We saw a school shooting. We saw the assassination of Charlie Kirk. And we remembered September 11th. All of those things hit me at once. You might know, I just had a baby with my, with my sweet wife. And it's a two-week-old little girl. And when all of those things happened last week, while we're remembering September 11th, it hit a little closer to me this year than other years. And I want to implore us, not only as Chattanoogaans- And I, I want to implore us, not only as Chattanoogaans, but as Americans, to take this time to remember what September 12th was like. We held each other a little bit closer. We gave each other a little bit more grace. We got along with others. Didn't matter what we thought, how we disagreed, or if we agreed, didn't matter. We held each other a little bit tighter on September the 12th, uh, 2001. Um, so, uh, that, that's all I wanted to say is, um, let's, let's remember how that day felt, September the 12th. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counsel, we have a motion on the floor to adjourn with a proper second. Do I have any further comment? All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you.